Welcome back to the November 10, 2020, City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hurdman is absent.
All right, without a closed session, we have no closed session report. Let's see, I don't think I've done it in a while. I'll do the invocation and Mr. Muldoon, if you could do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, please stand and remain standing after the invocation. Lord, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you for the ability to meet in a free country. We thank you for the ability to make decisions and represent our community. We ask that you watch over our men and women who are in the front lines, and we ask that you watch over those people who are working at hospitals. We ask that you watch over those people who are sick. We ask that you get them better. We ask that you watch over those people who are healthy. Please keep them that way. And as we move forward tonight, Lord, we ask that you give us patience and wisdom and guide us through our decisions. In these things, we ask by name. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. We'll move now into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council and committee activities. This is also the time to request a matter for future agenda under A1. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have an announcement, but I do have, well, I do have an announcement. I don't have a committee meeting to report. It gives me great pleasure to announce to the community about a special recognition to one of our city's newest restaurants. Fable and Spirit, located in Lido Village, has received the prestigious Michelin Discovery Award by the Michelin Guide, one of 25 in California and one of two in Orange County, and I think only one in, the only one in Newport Beach. Located in Lido Village, Fable and Spirit quotes the Guide, Michelin Guide. With its elegant design and backdrop of the sparkling sea, the fabled spot doesn't have to try that hard to win fans. And yet, it never rests solely on its good looks. The room is packed with an unmistakable hum of happy diners diving into delicious pub grub. I want to offer my congratulations to Darren and Jean Coyle and their family. It's a family operation, who own Fable and Spirit. They've worked hard, very hard, to bring their latest restaurant to great success in Newport Beach. They've been open since 2019, and they and their staff have received notable awards, also including chef and restaurant of the year for 2020 by Orange Coast Magazine. So we're very proud of their success and what they bring to our community for fine dining. Congratulations, Darren and Jean and team. So just wanted to do a shout out to let everyone know what a great restaurant we, restaurants, one of many great restaurants we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Newport Beach, I believe, strives to increase access to the harbor on a regular basis. I'd like to A1 at a future council meeting discussion about installing a disabled transfer lift at Marina Park. This will allow access for wounded veterans and disabled voters. The funds have been secured to fund the transfer lift, which is a mechanism you've probably seen frequently at other locations, and pay for the installation as well. And it's exciting to see what the future could bring for the sailing component as well. But I would like staff to, and I'll give them all the details off the dais, figure out if this can be done at Marina Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I had a meeting with constituents, with Dave Webb and Damon Soros of the Police Department, and Micah Martin, and Tony Brine, and residents that live near Carnation and Fourth because they, continuing problem with truck traffic at all hours of the day and night on the residential streets there. And we also talked about potential solutions for the numerous trash trucks that are continually at our local restaurants, and we're glad that they're there picking up the trash, but it's also creating a big problem for all the people that live nearby. So Dave has some ideas for that that we'll be bringing to our trash committee. And then today, I got to substitute for Mayor O'Neil at a Orange County Transportation Authority meeting of South County Transportation with electeds. And they talked about so many things. It was really interesting. And Dave, I tried to remember, I wrote notes at the time and then left them at home. So I tried to do a list here, but they were talking about the 73 in Newport Coast, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking at if there's any way that we can help to encourage people to use the toll road there. But they kept talking about multimodal, different ways of transportation. They were talking about Measure M money that contributes to community circulators. They talked about, really, a lot of talk about bike and golf and golf carts. And they were talking about, they have the same problem on some of their sidewalks and bike paths that we have with the boardwalk, where the numerous types of vehicles and pedestrians that are trying to use all these together are having real similar issues to what we're having to deal with. So I think it's an interesting group, and I look forward to being able to find out, you know, what they're doing in these cases that can possibly help us. We also talked a lot about neighborhood electric vehicles and both electric bikes and golf carts and ways of finding the, so that golf carts could utilize our city streets more so to enable residents to use those instead of having to get their cars out all the time. And there was a lot of talk about parking in coastal zones and ways of encouraging people not to bring their cars to the beach. Parking lots and various ways, transportation that could allow people to get to the beach without bringing their cars. So that was an interesting discussion. So those are just a few of the things that they were talking about, but I look forward to future meetings with this group because we do have a lot of similar issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Avery.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I attended the annual, the monthly meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District Board Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I was able to attend Huntington Beach's Homeless Navigation Center ribbon cutting at the request of Mayor Lynn Semeta over there. And I'm glad to see them working regionally within. It's good to go over and support them. We've got a couple of slides. One of them is for our, for it to come up. There you go. So on November 16th and November 17th, we've got our Housing Suitability Virtual Workshops, Parts One and Two. You can register at thenewporttogether.com website. This is for our general plan update, specifically the housing and circulation elements. The circulation element planning commission meeting is going to be on November 19th. I'm sorry, excuse me. Our planning commission meeting where they will be discussing the circulation element is on November 19th at 6:30. And then we will have a virtual workshop on November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. discussing the circulation element. So please go to newporttogether.com for registration and more information. We'll go to the next slide. And tomorrow is Veterans Day, as well as, by the way, our council member Diane Dixon's birthday. But far more people will probably be celebrating Veterans Day. So tomorrow is Veterans Day. To all of our veterans, near and far, we most certainly thank you for your service. And City Hall and most of our city facilities will be closed tomorrow in observance of our holiday. So with that, oh, excuse me, Ms. Dixon, I apologize. I need to come back to you.
That's what I forgot to mention. I'm having a District One Town Hall on Thursday, November 19th, a Zoom Town Hall at 5:00 p.m. The list of tentative agenda items are, these are the proposed ones at this point. I want to update the community, District One, on boardwalk safety enforcement to really update everyone where we are. Some, Chief Lewis will be talking about some stepped up enforcement we will be doing in the peninsula. So thank you so much, Chief. So I want to share that news with the residents. And there'll be an update on short-term lodging. And then the fire station, we just talked about earlier. So the formerly, the fire station formerly known as the Lido Fire Station may be needing a name change, so we'll ask the community to engage in that discussion. So Thursday, November 19th, 5:00 p.m. Zoom, and you can access the Zoom information on the city website calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The first will be consideration of reviewing the Newport Beach Municipal Code to strengthen short-term lodging enforcement. If you'd like to bring that item back at this time, please raise your hand.
That would be councilmembers Brenner, Duffield, Avery, and Dixon.
Okay. And the second is review of short-term lodging transferability provisions. If you'd like to see that brought back, please raise your hand.
That would be councilmembers Brenner, Duffield, Avery, and Dixon.
Okay. Now we'll move into public comments on consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council, do you have any items to pull or note a recusal or vote, note a no vote? Ms. Dixon.
I think I'm clear. Where is, excuse me, for the, I just, on this S value, is that, that's on the business? Fair market value, excuse me. Yes, I have nothing on consent. Thank you.
Understood. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, may vote a lodging, no vote on item 10.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to know if Mark would give us a little bit of more information on number eight. I don't want to pull it necessarily, but what that will involve as far as community inconvenience.
Sure, I'll bring him up in just a moment. Mr. Duffield. And Mr. Avery.
I have none.
All right, Mr. Vekoevich. The question posed to you on item number eight, which is the water transmission main phase two valve replacement, the question is, community inconvenience.
Yes, good evening, Mark Vekoevich. And I'll bring up Dave Webb here too, since this is a partnership project between the two departments. And Dave, maybe you want to lead us off here on the public part, and I'll close it in.
Yes, thank you. This isn't a significant project, multimillion dollar project to replace our major valves along our major water lines in the city. These are big instruments. Some of these valves will take about nine months to actually get, they're that special. So there will be some inconvenience anytime we're working in the public right of way. These are large lines. We are in Jamboree, we are in Coast Highway, we are up in Big Canyon. We will be working with our PIO to get the notice out well ahead of time. But there will be traffic conflicts, there'll be some lane closures, particularly like if we're working on Jamboree, we'll need to move traffic around. We've done this before as we've paved MacArthur. We just try to move traffic over to one of the other arterials. We give them advanced notice. It will also require some night work. We have one operation on Coast Highway in Jamboree, which is one of our large valve, very busy intersection. We'll probably have to do that at night just because we're trying to reduce the impacts on traffic. So we will be doing all this, we'll be doing public outreach on probably each valve as it comes along. Mike Senicore is our project manager, and Jim Hulan will be writing on this. So we'll be doing a lot of outreach with him.
Each valve takes like approximately how long to?
It'll depend on the valves. Some are small, but Mike, how long would that large valve, let's say a 36-inch take on average? I'm guessing the small valves go relatively quick, but the big ones, it's a big operation to get down, depending on the depth, what we have to do, taking the old valve, shutting off and putting it on, but maybe you can, there you go, Mike, you can give some input.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. It depends on the location, but Jamboree and Coast Highway will be especially challenging. It's just not the valves, but actually the pipe connecting either side of the highway. That work could take up to a few weeks, and we'll be phasing it and then working on the traffic control plans and try to do some of it during the day to not impact the residents. But some of the major tie-ins might have to be at night. We'll be thinking through that strategy with the contractor now that he's here and thinking what's the best for traffic flow as well as resident impact for night work.
So we will be able to send postcards out or something to our nearby residents to let them know when this is happening?
Absolutely. And we, this isn't our first time doing this in major work. So we will, depending on where we're at, some of them will be very quick. We'll get to the HOAs, definitely work with city manager's office in getting the word out multiple ways. And we will definitely get that out and try to minimize traffic as much as possible. If you're stuck for more than a minute or two, that's where I start getting nervous.
Yes. As long as, as we tell people ahead of time so they don't call us in the middle of the night, that would be great.
It's also important to know, we don't work between April and October just because that's a high water demand season. So we will stop projects and then come back in the following year, in that case, like October, and start again. So it is a long project. You'll be seeing us probably for a year and a half, two years out there as we wait for parts and get things in. And we'll be doing one at a time as we go through.
All right, questions? Nope. So before we go back to Mr. Avery, Ms. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hart brought to my attention, these are some dated conflicts, but I select to lodge them to be safe. Looks like I have a conflict relating to item five, possibly because it's underground construction related telecom communications, and as well on item seven for the same reason. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I need to lodge a recusal on item three for business reasons.
All right. Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of consent calendar items, one through 11, with no items pulled by the council members, but with a no vote on item 10 by Councilmember Muldoon. And accusations from Councilmember Muldoon on items five and seven. Accusal on item three by Councilmember Duffield. And we have just minor amendments to the minutes, which is item one.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. All right, at this time, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, do we have any calls? All right, we'll bring it back. We have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2020-27, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending chapter 17.40, livable boards of Title 17, harbor code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and other related provisions. The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
At this time, we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items. If you have a public comment on non-agenda, please speak. We'll go to the community room first.
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. You may recall that last fall, you heard a appeal of a matter involving a private dock that was being reconfigured, and both before and after the reconfiguration, the floats were going to extend beyond the pier headline. In response to that, you developed and approved a new policy that was supposed to address pier permit requests. And since they are not broadcast, I wanted to let you know that last night, the Harbor Commission, sitting where you are tonight, heard a very similar application for reconfiguration of a private residential dock. Although their conclusion was very similar to the conclusion you reached last fall, at least to me, that conclusion was clearly contrary to the new policy that you had adopted, which was not supposed to allow any dock to extend beyond the pier headline unless there had previously been a permit, that is, that there was a permit on file for that residence to extend beyond the pier headline. What was a little concerning about this was that the Harbor Commission, perhaps a little drunk with the sense of power that they imagine they have following ratification by the voters, seemed to regard your policies as just general guidance to them, that they did not have to strictly follow, or alternatively, that they could interpret the lines of the policy different than they appeared to have been written. I wanted to bring this to your attention because if you are concerned about your policy being followed as written, one or more of you may wish to call that decision up for review or alternatively, remind the Harbor Commission of how you want your policy enforced, which may or may not have been how they chose to interpret it last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Nancy Scarborough again. I'd like to address an issue of communication between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the City of Newport Beach, specifically regarding the Ensign Intermediate School construction. The Ensign construction is well underway and portions of it are already complete. If you were to take a look at the new driveway approach into the drop-off parking lot on Cliff Drive, you might notice that the approach is very narrow and is, has an extremely tight radius. It's unlikely that a Newport Beach emergency vehicle would be able to enter the parking and drive through the area in the event of an emergency. I'm almost positive a fire truck wouldn't be able to make the inner, enter and make that curve, and probably a paramedic vehicle would have difficulty as well. Since we now have a change of trustees about to take place, I think it would be a good time for the police and fire department, along with community services, to take a look at this situation and consider alternatives to discuss with the Newport Beach, or I mean, the Newport Mesa Unified School District. I'm not suggesting that there was any lack of oversight on the part of Newport Beach staff. NMUSD has acted as if they were a sovereign nation during the entire planning and construction of this project. Secondly, the drive-through parking lot on Cliff Drive and the staff parking lot on Irvine have been constructed with an asphalt slope that slopes toward the street. The drainage from the parking surfaces goes under the sidewalk directly into Newport Beach's gutters and storm drains. Current California code does not allow any runoff to leave the property. The district should have installed cisterns to capture the runoff. They did not. This is wrong, and NMUSD should be held responsible. It should not be Newport Beach's problem. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We're the next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls? Okay. Bring it back and move into, excuse me, we'll move into public hearing. Item number 12, annual review of zoning implementation for Sierra by the Sea. I think this was a fairly robust staff report, and I, so, do I, any questions up here?
I just have a question.
Ms. Dixon.
I don't need to have a, who's coming up? I guess Mr. Juerges. Could you just clarify for the public, the name change of Sierra by the Sea? And is that, have you had a chance to look into how these, this name change was handled? Was it filed in public forums, whatever needs to be done?
That's correct. The, the operators have, do have a corporation. They are allowed to file for a DBA, and that DBA for Sierra by the Sea was filed properly. They have submitted the paperwork to us, the city. Belinda Whelan, the assistant planner, she's been working on that, communicating with the applicant. They are in the community room if you have any questions for them, but it has properly been filed.
All right, any other questions on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neil, Jim Mosher again. I just noticed the correspondence in the lobby about the thoroughness of the name change from Sober Living by the Sea to Sierra by the Sea, and the response from the corporation saying, among other things, that they had updated all of their Newport Beach business licenses to the new name so that it would be clear to the public and everybody who they were and what they were operating under. I checked just an hour before the meeting in our business license database, and I noticed that they had changed the business license names for each of the residential facilities. But they do have, as the staff report mentions, an administrative office where they perhaps hold group meetings. I'm not sure what they do there. It's a waterfront location at 2800 Lafayette. And as of this afternoon, the business license there still says Sober Living by the Sea, which could produce some confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, do we have any calls? Nope. All right, we'll bring it back up. Do we have a, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Avery.
I'd just like to say, you know, there's a, a report on, by our code enforcement supervisor about compliance, and there's a number of things in this report, from trash cans to noise to smoking. And there, and what I'm saying is, there were no complaints for anything during this entire, I'm not sure what the period was, but it's remarkable. And I think if this is the case, you know, it's being very well managed. And there's a lot of facilities and a lot of folks, so they're, they're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion then on this item?
I'll make a motion, yes, to approve the item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brenner. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
All right, let's go ahead with item number 13. Ms. Dixon, I think earlier you were, you wanted to make sure you had did something on this item, so I wanted to make sure I.
Oh, thank you. Are we going to have a staff discussion on it? It's not necessary. I just had a question.
No, but if you have a question, okay, all right.
Let me get to it. So first of all, thank you for completing this market assessment and bringing it forward. And I understand with the proposed increase that you've talked with the business industry organization, and they are supportive of a phased-in approach, so I appreciate that. You did an amendment on the resolution this afternoon, and that was just to clarify the timing of the effectiveness of?
Correct. The amendment on the reso is just for a 60-day implementation for that first step increase.
My only question is really just for further edification as we go forward. I know, Mr. Juerges, you're going to be coming back in the new year with some other discussions about impact fees and other items related to projects in the city. You do mention that others, you've done some review work with other cities and how they establish their In-Lu Park fees. And one, I noticed on page 13-5, the City of Irvine requires the subdivider, the project owner, to obtain an appraisal at the time of their application. We do not, the City of Newport Beach does not require that, correct? So, go ahead.
Correct. We don't require that, but we can change our process if we'd like to in the future.
Because our process has been every, coincident with every census, so, but we did this last in 2000. We did not do it in 2010.
That's correct.
To update the market appraisal.
We're behind on this, and this is something we started working on in 2019, then COVID hit. You know, we should have been, from a staff standpoint, we should have been ahead of it. But, you know, we feel that it's, we've got to bring it back, we've got to update that, and we can change our methodology going forward.
Well, what do you, what's your opinion of how the City of Irvine does it? I mean, to require, put the burden on the project applicant?
I think it's a, it's a great way to do it. I do want to wait till the 2020 census comes out. I think that's important. And also feel like we need to wait till this general plan update process is complete. The recreational element right now requires five acres per thousand people. That is a lot of acreage, and that is kind of a hindrance towards housing. So I think we've got to complete that general plan study and see where that lands also before we kind of change our methodology.
And then also some cities, or the City of Newport Beach only measures the, assesses the In-Lu Park fee on residential housing. As we know, we are going to be building more multifamily units. We might want to look at that, incorporate that in your future study.
That's correct. You know, the other part we're talking about is bringing back an item for study session for the future in 2021 is more development impact fees, you know, fees associated with fire, police, parks. fire, police, parks. Those things that we think we can probably talk with the council and get some more direction. Do they want to charge a park fee for multifamily when there is actually a unit to rent? This fee that Lauren Whitlinger here, she's a real property administrator, she did the study, this is really gauged towards for-sale product. So we don't have anything for rent product, and maybe that's something the council would like to consider.
So we really haven't looked at any of this for many, many years, probably since 2007, is that correct? So it's probably time to look at this. So as far as tonight's recommendation, as you've recommended, we'll move it forward, but to be noted, in the new year, I'd like to look at all these different areas again. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll go out to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, Jim Mosher once again. I had several comments on this item. First of all, the resolution adopting a fee amount that you are considering adopting tonight, that resolution supports an ordinance, and although the fee may be out of date, not having been updated since 2007, the ordinance, or chapter, chapter 19.52 in our municipal code, which explains when the fee is charged, what it's charged for, and how the fee is used, has not been updated since 2001, and the state law that it is supposed to be implementing has been revised multiple times since 2001. So you're adopting a fee to support an ordinance that is now out of date. That said, I was a little disturbed to hear the idea that we might be backing off on our five-acre-per-1,000 park standard. That was hard-won when it was originally implemented, and I think there are many people who would be unhappy to see the city relaxing that standard. In the absence of a staff report, the explanation of the fee that we are recommending to charge is a little hard for the public to understand. My impression, looking at the written staff report, is that the appraisal is based on the cost of buying open space in specific parts of the city. As I understand our chapter in the municipal code and the state law it's supposed to be implementing, the In-Lu fee actually has to be used to purchase park property in the vicinity of the development who is paying the fee. And I can imagine, in many places, there is not open park space that you can just purchase, or rundown industrial area that you can purchase. And I don't see the relevance of those appraisals to the cost of purchasing developed land in other parts of our city, which I can imagine would be quite higher. And then finally, I noticed in the state law that among our responsibilities in collecting these fees is to clearly indicate at the time of collection what they're going to be used for. So we, as a public agency, are supposed to have, it says, a schedule specifying how, when, and where the fees are going to be used to develop a park or recreation facility for the residents from whom it's being collected. It's possible the city of Newport Beach has such a schedule showing where our residual fund, what it was collected for, and where it's going to be used, and when. I am not aware of that schedule, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls on this item? All right, we'll bring it back. Any discussion up here? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dixon makes the motion. Do we have a second? Taken by Mr. Avery. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Duffield, I'm sorry, Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
All right, we'll move into item number 14, Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to lodge a conflict on this item, based on the designs, which include an underground component, as it relates to my prior business interests, or business in telecommunications. Thank you.
Thank you. Given the discussion that we'd had earlier today in the Public Facilities Corporation, me and I trust that this will be a brief report, although awesome project.
Actually, thank you, and I can make it very brief. We did talk extensively about that tonight. Mr. Houlihan's still with us, said we'd like to go through the report, but what I'd like to really bring forward is we have an exciting project here. The council's been working with the community for some time. Really thankful for all those efforts through Diane's Town Hall, has come up with a great thing. The council's leadership in finding a location and buying property and going through the concept development to come up with the concept for the fire station number two tonight. I'm really excited to bring you an exciting bid tonight for this contract. We were estimating this would come in at 7.9 million, and to our opportunity of faith, unfortunately through COVID, I think we've got a sweet spot, and our bid came in about $6,289,000, or about 1.2, 1.1 under our estimate, 26%. So with that, unless you want specific details on it, I would ask that you approve this construction contract tonight, and the other amendments with it, including the financing portion that we talked about earlier. And there are a couple of other little things with regard to architect in here.
I appreciate that. I'll just say a couple of quick things. The first one is, this is a long time coming, and for many of us up on the council, this has been one of those projects we've been looking forward to getting to. And it's taken a while, and it's gotten to the point now where the financing's available. And for those watching, if you'd like to have a little bit more in-depth discussion about the financing, we did discuss that at the four o'clock hour. But I am just, I'm really thrilled that this is the kind of city that can set aside sufficient funding that can be a bedrock for the financing side of things, that allows us to purchase, essentially, financial flexibility, while also making sure that the need-to-have projects and a fire station is a need-to-have project, especially when it was built in 1962. And Chief Boiles reminded me, was it a somewhat temporary station?
Yes.
It was in the 50s?
Yeah, 51, 52.
As a somewhat temporary station. And yeah, it's been really temporary. So we're, it's like any good government project, it's temporary until it's permanent. So anyway, I'm really thrilled for this, I'm looking forward to seeing this. I know the Corona del Mar Fire Station is now one of the, it probably is the premier fire station, and that's where people used to fight not to be, and now I think they're fighting to be, and that's great. So really excited for this one. I think this is a really big deal, and I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking. I'm looking forward even more, though, to the completion. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I concur with those comments of our mayor. You know, coming on council four years ago, you know, that was just starting to roll, and then getting that property on the peninsula was huge, and just totally the right spot in getting it out of where it is and on the main drag, and trading McDonald's for a really nice-looking building and a fire station on top of it. And I just think, it says a lot about this city that we just, I just, it's a real win for us, and I just think it involved so many people, you know, staff and executives and council and the public, and here it is. And it's going to be built, and it's very smartly, in my view, handled from a financial standpoint. Gives us flexibility going forward in case we have some other issues with finance in terms of the COVID. So I just think so much thought went into it, and it's great. So, real fan. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dixon.
Well, I'll just echo these comments, and certainly this, and I'll make the motion to support this financing plan and resolution authorizing the preparation of the site. I want to commend staff. I mean, I'm not surprised, none of us are surprised. Another outstanding project is now getting started, and we'll see completion, and we'll be proud of it, as we are of all the major capital projects that our excellent public work staff is responsible for. Delighted to see that, I think the last time we had a small discussion about this project, it was, we were anticipating higher construction costs, so whatever you did to get those costs down by a million dollars, without compromising the quality of the structure. One aspect that may go a little bit unnoticed is going to be a beautiful, beautiful functional, it's going to be functional fire station with in and out, our going drive-through. I mean, it really will be state-of-the-art. But importantly also for the peninsula, there will be a public restroom. And this is what many of the businesses, the business owners especially, and residents have wished for, a public restroom in that mid-peninsula area, because it's, otherwise, it's a problem on our streets and curbs and people's front yards. So I appreciate how you factored that into the overall planning, and I look forward to it. So thank you, thank you, thank you for seizing the opportunity with the McDonald's side coming, and the finance team coming up with the creative financing, and for my colleagues to support this project. It's obviously needed from a functional standpoint, and it will be another source of pride in our community. So thank you, Public Works, thank you, Finance, thank you, city staff, for moving this forward. Appreciate it.
Actually, thank you again, Ms. Dixon, because you're really the fighter for that public restroom that some people just didn't want to have there, but the community wanted it, so thanks for keeping that in.
When we come back from public comment, I'll make sure that Ms. Dixon has the privilege of making the motion. I would just ask for the privilege of making the second. I'd also like to just quickly thank our finance committee for the work they've done in reviewing the financing on this. I'd also like to thank our city manager's office, Public Works in particular, and then fire department for all of the effort that we've made. I'm sure I'm missing a department or two, but on the lead side of things, I just want to say thank you. This really will be a big deal for the safety of our community. All right, with that, we'll go out to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, probably in there somewhere was mentioned you're approving not just the construction, but also the issuance of bonds. And so I'm looking at page 14-3 of the staff report, which itemizes who we are borrowing $9 million to pay. And I would just notice at the very bottom of the list on page 14-3, one of the vendors we are borrowing money to pay is the city of Newport Beach for their permitting fees. Admittedly, it's a very small amount out of the $9 million, which just seems strange to me that we're borrowing money to pay ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, do we have any calls on that? Coming back around. Ms. Leung, would you like to comment on the permitting? Maybe that's for Steve. It's someone.
There were some permitting fees, both internal agency and external agencies. We do pay ourselves, that's part of it. We've been doing that with all our projects. So with that, I'd like to all, to recommend and compliment the community development department. They did a lot, hand-in-hand plan checks, and they'll be doing the inspection on this. So we do pay their fees, but they're right as part of our partnership.
All right, that's not quite what was being asked. What was being asked is, are we financing, are we looking to finance the $16,500 that we were paying ourselves? I think that's, sorry, I think that's the question. It's not whether we have permit fees, I understand that we do. I think the question is. So the answer to that question is yes, it's part and parcel of the total cost of the project. Okay.
But I think what I was trying to get at, though, I think there's a lot of fees that are required that actually pass through from us to the state. Those are the fees that are in there. So it sounds like it's just to ourselves, but it's actually fees that actually we have to collect for the state and goes up to there. So I see Jim Houlihan ready to jump up if you want more detail on that.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's not like we could waive these, they would actually be required? Okay.
Yes, and it's not like then we're paying ourselves for that through the financing.
No, that's a good question, so, okay, understood, we're good. All right, all right, with that, we're, I'm sorry, did we have any calls on this? Okay. All right, with that, we'll go to Ms. Dixon.
I'd like to make a motion. Before I do that, just as the mayor said, we always leave somebody out. The fire department was obviously instrumental in designing and scoping this project and meeting their needs for high, reliable, fast, beating the national norms and response times, and this fire station will add to our capability. And thank you, thank you, Chief Boiles, for everything you've done and your team to bring this forward, and all the departments. It takes a village, literally, to put all this together, and it's really going to be an exciting project. So I'm proud to make the motion for the financing plan, to approve the financing plan and resolution authorizing the preparation, sale, and delivery not to exceed $10 million for our fire station number two, soon to be named, something else with the community's involvement. Thank you.
All right, and that's the award of the construction contract as well?
Yes.
All right, all right, and I'm going to second that. So I, by the way, have a, I agree with staff's thought in terms of what this is going to be named. I'm not going to say it, because I know you're going to be talking about it, but I like what staff's thought is that. Anyway, all right, we'll move forward. So we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote.
And that's also adoption of the amended resolution, correct?
Correct, oh, yes, hang on one second. That's what you've understood, the amended?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay, second, agrees.
The motion carries unanimously, 5-0, with Councilmember Muldoon recusing himself.
That is a long time coming. All right, we'll move now into, give me just a moment, item number 15, the COVID-19 update. Oh, yeah.
Begin on the, okay, sorry.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I just have a very brief presentation. If we go on to this first slide here, this just, just as a reminder on the tiered framework from the state, and we are currently in that substantial, that red tier of, not widespread, but the next level of the coronavirus risk there. So the next slide here on that is continuing to look at the trend for Orange County, which you can see, the numbers that come out every Tuesday, the one that just came out today actually shows some positivity from the last week. You can see the case per 100,000 went down to 5.6, which still puts us in the red tier. The positivity rate at 3.3 is actually very good. It actually pulls us, it would put us into a less risky tier, but because of the other ones, the health equity metric and the case per 100,000 keeps us in the red. So that's the good news. But I want to do that with a big caveat, because as you know, a lot of these, the data that goes in here, the state uses a little bit of a complicated formula that, some of it's a bit of a mystery, but does look at a seven-day lag, and is a look back when they do these figures. And so we know the most recent numbers that have been coming out from the county, I'm just taking a look since Friday, November 6th through today, we have, that case per 100,000's been in the 300, 322, 500, 300, 267 today. Those are very high numbers. And hearing the county speak, they say when the numbers are in the mid-200s and higher, those usually translate into a higher, that case per 100,000, that would land us back into the purple tier. So that's very concerning to see these numbers, and so we're waiting kind of anxiously for next week's figures that come out, that there could be a very good chance that we will end up in that purple tier. Now, I do want to emphasize the way the tier system works, you have to be, you have to hit the numbers in, say, a worst tier, like the purple tier, for two weeks in a row, and then there's an adjudication process with the state before we actually move into that purple tier. So if we do have numbers that start next week, it would probably be two to three weeks past that where we would actually be into the purple tier. So there's a little bit of time, we'll see if there's, with additional testing, and see if the numbers change to hold us in the red. But if you also see from the next slide, this is a color coding of all the tiers for all the counties in the state, and you can see. all the counties in the state, and you can see us down there, we're kind of the lone red tier amongst a sea of purple. And with the counties surrounding us in the purple tier, people move across whether work-wise, whether, you know, just our personal lives. So we, we're not in a bubble, and I think the fact that there's other counties in this purple tier puts us at that risk, too. And you just, you hear that generally, too, not just in California, but across the nation of concern, especially with this upcoming flu season and colder weather, that we're seeing a surge happening. I think one of the positives is the numbers don't seem as steep as earlier in the summer, but it's certainly something that we're cautiously watching right now, and that's my report I have for tonight.
Yeah, I'll echo what you're saying. The, generally speaking, because of the way we, the numbers work out, we need to see on average around 220 cases per day to stay in the red. Just a quick highlight of, I was looking on the Orange County COVID-19 dashboard on, remember 220. On November 2nd, it was 366. On November 3rd, it was 363. On November 4th, it was 356. On November 5th, it was 343. So with a seven-day lag, that will factor in coming up pretty soon. And so I would caution everyone to pay attention to that and anticipate that, I believe, next week we will probably see a purple tier warning. Remember that there is that two weeks, but if we don't, if we continue to see the numbers increasing like that, we will probably re-enter purple. And the only other thing I would mention real quickly, hospitalizations here in Orange County were, our peak back in July was about 722 hospitalizations, so those are patients who are positive, positive for COVID, who are currently in the hospital. Currently, we're at about 224, but that is an increase over the last few weeks, and fortunately ICUs, we've also seen a little bit of an increase. Those aren't, I would, I don't think we would call them spikes, but they're certainly increases. They're seeing a spike, though, down in San Diego, for example, and so we're watching all the numbers around us, and as the numbers are getting worse, perhaps not surprisingly, ours are as well. So it's, it's important to continue to take this seriously, and especially when you're in close proximity, you, you go ahead and use that facial covering. So, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a story in today's Wall Street Journal, I think it was, that some study has come out, it's nationally, about showing that the spikes in cities are coming from, or they, they do the tracing, and it's determined it's coming from restaurants and bars, not in our city. I'm just saying, this is where they're identifying that these are repeat sources, which, how are we doing on our enforcement of what are existing, we're just enforcing the state's mandates and our own city special enforcement of all of our, I mean, we don't have a mask mandate. I'm not suggesting any new enforcement or code laws, I'm just saying, how are we doing on enforcement? Are we actively enforcing?
We do, you know, our, our first method is to educate with businesses, and we do, if we have complaints, we do follow up on those and start there with the business owners. Certainly, we're very active. We do have nighttime code enforcement that we're starting up, and we have holiday, holiday weekend coverage through the scheduling of our code enforcement officers. So we are trying to certainly get at the, on the restaurant side, when they are operating, to be out there and to do periodic surprise inspections as well, just to continue to maintain that.
So we've been active in that area?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. One last thing, if you're going on the Orange County website, the dashboard they've got, you can always look to see how all of our zip codes, they actually break them down by zip codes, how the zip codes are doing based on the positivity percentage and case count rates. So if you're interested at all, every zip code in Newport Beach, as you would probably guess, it's all the within red, some are within the, some are actually within the orange. And the length of the peninsula from mid, all the way down is currently at zero, at least on that seven, seven-day lag, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, there you go. They're doing something right down there. So anyway, I wanted to point that out. My only caution would be, make sure you're paying attention to population size when you're, when you're looking at that.
I guess I would just also say, it's not just our residents. I mean, we have an attractive community that people come from other communities to enjoy our hospitality, so, and they wouldn't be recorded as Newport Beach zip codes.
That's true. I'm talking more, only about our residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So anyway, my, my point being, if you'd like to get more information, there's lots more on the site. All right, we'll go out to public comments. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, as to how this affects our city government, I believe the Central Library goes by the state museum criteria, so a reversion in tiers might cause the Central Library to close again after being open for a few weeks. My question would be, as to the City Hall and the services there, I think we have more discretion, and so are we anticipating that that might close again? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room? All right, any calls? Good question, Ms. Liang. What would it take for us to look, look again at closing the, closing City Hall?
Our City Hall functions are part of essential operations, so they are kind of separately from the, each of the tier sections. I've been monitoring that very carefully. I do think, I am looking at what the numbers are with our employees, and thankfully, we've had actually several weeks of no COVID cases within our employee groups, so that's been very good. We do have very strong social distancing requirements, mask requirements within City Hall. And then we just, we looked at that, we factor in particularly areas where we do have a high level of demand on our services, particularly at our permit counters. So we do want to balance and make sure we have the safety, but still providing customer service. So as we continue to look at, to see where the data looks, looks like, where the particular cases are happening within the city, we'll adapt and adjust, and I think that will have to continue for some time.
All right. Okay. And Madam Clerk.
Now's the time for a motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any such motions? All right, seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.